Hi Deacon. I don't see you have volume. Nice. And I can only see your nose and your glasses. I think you have volume. Oh, I can't hear, but it looked like you were talking.
Hi Becky. Did you hear me?
I can.
Oh, good, good.
I don't know if it was me, maybe I didn't have the volume on.
No, I was just being a little slow. So we're the only ones here so far.
So far, yep. You were ahead of me, sorry. I find people come in at the last moment, except for Jim Hemingway comes in like 20 minutes ahead.
Twenty?
Yeah.
That's extreme.
Yeah, it is. How are you doing?
Oh, I'm doing okay. The mushrooms are getting better.
Oh, good.
The colder weather is a help.
Yeah, you've had a tough season with them.
Well, the moisture is a real problem. That's Susan said you took some of the big ones. Those were those I was worried about because they took on a little moisture while they were growing.
They were delicious. I grew them right away.
Good, good. Well, that's the thing to do because they, when they're a little moist, they don't hold up as well.
Yep. No, they were really good.
Good.
And we did hire, did you get the email?
I did. That's good news. That's good news.
She'll get appointed tomorrow night and then start on Monday. I'm sorry she's missing this meeting, but at least.
Well, I'm glad she's hired.
I know. I was like, she wanted the weekend to think about it. I was like, oh my God.
Well, it is a little, well, I can see where it would be a little intimidating. It's a lot of new stuff, especially with the Concom.
Yep. And that's her biggest concern.
Well, it should be.
Yeah. And she'll dive in. She's already started reading what she can.
She seems very pleasant. I mean, from the, from the virtual meeting we had.
Yep. No, she's even more so in person.
Yeah.
I got a chance to, she came in on Friday and we went over stuff and that was nice.
So, so is she gonna, does she, does she have a regular schedule of hours at Town Hall?
She's gonna try to do, let's see, Monday and Thursday from two to five.
Okay. Yep, yep. Because I always, I always tried to, to talk to, talk to, well, Linda was the last one who was there before COVID and I always tried to do business with her during those hours, you know.
Yeah, that's helpful.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that'll work out well.
Yeah.
So we have a couple more people coming on.
I don't know who these folks are.
Oh, and here's Michael.
Yeah.
I think Deacon, if I can put Michael and Jeff as co-hosts, I'm not gonna stay for the whole meeting. I've gotta go take care of some stuff.
That's good. Well, there's Michael now, so.
Hi there.
Hi there.
I'm gonna make you co-host.
Okay, sure.
And I have the waiting room off, so people are just pouring in. You don't have to watch.
Okay.
Yeah, that's always a headache if they pile up. All right, um. I guess Michael, with you as co-host, that should cover it. Or did you want, should I make, well, you can make somebody else a co-host. Should I make you host then?
Yeah, yeah, make me host and then I can make, usually Steve or Nathan is good.
Oh, and here's Steve. I can do that before I get off. Make him a co-host. Because I discovered I can like, take myself out of the picture.
So wait, do you want me to monitor or what?
Michael is, I'm gonna make him the host and if you're just.
If, yeah, if you don't mind, Steve, just sort of like recognizing people like you've done before, that would be cool.
Okay, I will do that. Can I unrecognized people like Deacon, for example? I'd really appreciate it.
I pay you to do it. Hey, let's just make sure I didn't make Deacon the host.
A good plan.
No, he is not.
Okay.
And Becky, you remember which button to push, right?
Not the. Oh dear God, that was bad.
And Becky, you set this up so people have to be recognized or not let it be let in? Is that correct?
I took it off so people pour in, just to make it more challenging for you guys.
Okay.
And I think the Zoom user, the only unnamed is Leslie Bracebridge, so.
Her picture appeared briefly.
Yep. All right.
Wait, Zoom user is Leslie?
Yes.
Okay.
There we go.
Leslie is driving from the Bridge of Flowers home and I thought, well, I might as well be listening to this as the radio, so your background noise, but I'm gonna be taking you off speaker and video, so if you go to ask me a question, I won't be answering.
Okay.
Should we talk about my sponsorships or do ads or anything in between?
I, I'll just let you folks do whatever and I'm, it's just my entertainment, my driving entertainment. Who knows, I may get disconnected and then I'm gone, but it's not, don't take offense if I get disconnected.
Okay.
Leslie, I can't believe you can't find better entertainment.
I love to listen to meetings at night. I can do dishes to them. I can. I'm gonna miss Zoom meetings someday. Bye, everybody.
Bye. All right, I was just gonna make, Nathan's on too. Michael, you can make him a co-host and I will jump out. Good night. Have a great meeting.
All right.
Night. And let's hope I don't press the wrong button. Leave meeting is okay. End meeting.
All right. Well, it's after seven. We have a quorum. Why don't I, why don't I open the meeting and, and start by reading the governor's announcement?
Please do.
I'm sorry?
Please do.
I'm trying. My, my eyes are weak.
With feeling.
The governor's restrictions on public meetings. This meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request a recording of this meeting by contacting clerk. All right. And we can start with public comment. I don't, I don't know, I don't know if people wanna make public comment now or just go through with the agenda. I don't.
Sure, if there's any public, this is their time.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not aware of anybody seeking to speak at the moment, so, so I'll move on to the associate member item. I, I sent to the web committee, what I had hoped was a town announce. As it turns out, they have not gotten back to me or, or sent it out, so I was, I was thinking that maybe Michael could look into what happened. I mean, certainly possible that it's, that it's my incompetence. I'm totally down with that idea, but, but it was supposed to, I did write a, I did write an announcement.
Okay, didn't you, can you, did you send it to us? Do I have it or no?
Well, I sent it to the web committee using their link.
Well, no, I'm just thinking if you send me a copy.
I will.
Okay.
I mean, well, I do think that, that it is, I can send you a copy of it. It is a little bit dated now because I was asking people to come on the 13th.
Right. Well, the reason I asked is twofold, Deacon. One, just to have it when I talk to them, but having been on the web committee, I know Fred will say, you can send it out yourself. So I just have to remember how to do that. But I, we should be, once we update the information, I'll check with them, but my assumption is I'll just end up sending it on behalf of the, the planning board.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, I don't think it'll, I don't think it requires much revision beyond the date.
And then I can post it on the planning board page as well, which is, I was looking at the minutes. I had said I would do that once the announce, announcement went out.
Yeah, okay, great, great. So do we want, does anybody want to say anything more about, about that?
I had two questions. I guess one is just really simple, which is, do we want to have people respond by the October meeting? Which would be the revised date?
And I'm. Yeah, which is the 11th.
Okay. Well, actually, I don't think we're gonna meet on the 11th because that's Indigenous Peoples' Day slash Columbus Day.
Is that still a public holiday?
Yeah.
For some.
No, officially it is. I mean, Columbus Day is, it hasn't been, I don't think it's been changed statewide to the Indigenous Peoples' Day, but Columbus Day is a holiday.
Okay. Well, well, maybe we should talk about when we want to meet next then, if it's not that date.
Can we do the following week?
I'm fine with that. That'd be the 18th.
Yeah.
I think I'm okay for that.
That's fine with Robert.
Okay, here.
Me too.
Okay, good, good. I hear every, great, great. I'll be in touch with you, Michael. Can we, can we, I'm sorry, can you just repeat that? What did we just all agree to?
Changing the, the date. So we're scheduled for October 11th in terms of the calendar, but that's Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day. So agreed to meet on October 18th, the next Monday.
Let's just say Indigenous Peoples have a different way of celebrating that day.
Yeah.
No, that's right. That's right.
So Deacon, if I may, my second question, which is more substantive, so I, I don't, I think I was not part of the conversation when we talked about the associate members, so I'm just gonna revisit. Did we, was there any, we asked people to write something and submit by a certain date, but was there any guidance in terms of,
Well, yeah.
Like what background we wanted or anything like that?
Yeah, we did agree to that and I, I, yeah. But.
I've, I've asked a couple people and haven't gotten anybody that's ready to follow through yet.
Okay.
But I, I would just be careful that we don't throw up so many hoops and requirements of ourselves that this just becomes tedious.
No, but I mean, it is true that we haven't, we haven't, we haven't succeeded in making a good public effort yet.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I will, I'll take what you send me and get it out to town announce and then put it on the website and we'll wait for the message to arrive next month.
Okay, great. And, and I think a note on, on the planning board page would be good.
Yeah, I'll definitely do that.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's move on to the minutes from eight 25.
I will move to approve the minutes of eight 25, 2021.
Second.
Okay, good. And I have a, a short list of minor, minor corrections.
Go for it.
Okay, so on the first page, about 60% of the way down, there's a sentence that starts, Lacy raises a concern. And the line below that, the word illusory is misspelled. It should be I L L instead of E L. We can, we call that alternate spelling, not misspelling.
Okay.
To be PC.
Okay. I got another alternate spelling at the, at the last line of that paragraph. Bonified is two words, B O N A F I D E. I knew that didn't look right.
Okay, and then before you proceed, I need to just catch up with what, what you just did. So bona fide is two words.
Yeah.
Say.
B O N A, bona, space, F I D E.
Okay. Okay, and then the other one that was the illusory, right? And I had alternate spelling on that. What's the correct usage there?
I L L.
I L L.
Instead of E L. And then on the, on the second page, the first line of text, Michael's name is misspelled. Oh, thank you. Alternate spelling. It should be a capital C.
Michael, you know, it would be easier if you could just change the way you spell your name.
I was thinking of Smith. What do you think of that?
Well, no, you could keep your name the same, just like let go of that other capitalization.
You should see the mail. It'd be something else.
Okay, and then and Mark Whiteman, the fourth line, Leverett Road, the alternate spelling lacks a terminal E. Okay.
Okay.
Just three, only three Es in Leverett?
That's right. Only three.
Okay.
And then and then about halfway down the page, on the line beginning with May 4, the verb do should be does. And then on the next line, do should also be does.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Nathan?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and then this one, then this next, this next two are slightly more substantive.
Yeah.
Whitman and the people at S V E Associates were under the impression that three building lots would be allowed. And I think we want to say could there, because we, in the new version, we have some discretion. And.
Yeah, it's a better choice.
And the two woods on that line should both be changed to could. And that's it. I loved the minutes.
Yes, thank you, Nathan. Good job.
Great. So Nathan, I only had one at the very beginning, which I don't, did you, did you see the email I sent with them?
I haven't, I haven't had a chance. You said you were gonna share it at the meeting, so.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. At the very top, right below public comment, is the Gee's A and R. It's just a spacing thing between the, his A and last name. Just needs to space is all.
Oh, yeah, yep. Wow, okay.
And I caught the misspelling, the, the missing C capitalization on my own name, so Deacon beat me to that one. That was the other one.
You know, yeah, I, I do appreciate the, the proofreading, gentlemen. I really, really do. As you've noticed the pattern, I tend to do these kind of late, you know, the night before the meeting and just kind of send it out. You know, I'm trying to, I, I actually, I did the first half of it, you know, kind of right after the meeting and then never got back to it until yesterday, but I am trying to, you know, get a, get the good information in there so that it's, you know, well documented. And, and also for the record, you know, Michael's name appears in the document 10 times, so nine out of 10.
Yeah, you did good.
Well, I'm sorry for, for my fussiness. My mother was an English teacher. When I was a child, I was not allowed at the dinner table to split an infinitive. Deacon, that explains a lot. It's a horrible upbringing. You know, Deacon, I, I really do appreciate it very much, so it's good, you know, and yeah, I've got some gaps, obviously, with spelling and, you know, every now and again, some stuff gets by me, so I appreciate the careful review. I really do.
Okay, and, and I have some good news. The town will be hiring a land use clerk tomorrow night. Yay. Lisa Stratford?
Which one is that? Is that the person from Leverett?
Yeah, yeah, she's the town clerk of Leverett.
You mean, just, just, just when Nathan was getting into a groove, taking note, minutes?
I think this is wonderful news. I mean, this is gonna, I mean, this is gonna take a burden off us.
Yeah, it will.
Yeah. Deacon, do you think she's gonna have enough time for us if she's town clerk? She decided to take the job. I mean, I think town clerk is, is, I don't know, maybe 20 hours in, in Leverett? Cool. So it's good. It's good.
That's true. That's, that's interesting. How many hours is it in Shute's Berry?
I think it's thought to be 14, 15 a week, 14 to 19, something like that.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah. I mean, for the, for the three boards. Yeah. I'm just saying, I was seeing, you know, there's time and there's also conflict of meetings, so.
No, no, I'm sorry. Not, not land use clerk, but, you know, town.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But if they're town clerking in Leverett and there's, you know, there's some reason to go to something, but we'll see. This is great. She's, I guess her, I guess her kids are out of the house and she's, she's, she wants more work, so. Cool. Right.
That's good for us.
The position was offered to another candidate who came up, who turned out to have a better offer, so.
Okay, so we did.
We haven't voted yet.
No, we need to. Before we, before we call the roll, did we have a second? Who was the second?
I seconded.
Okay, okay, right, thank you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll call the roll. Michael? Hi. Jeff?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I thought I saw Rob, Robert.
Robert, yes, I.
And I'm an I. I think we got it.
Don't forget to call my name.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes. Do you approve?
I.
Okay. My apologies.
All good. Nathan, you have to come in some slack. Remember what he said about splitting the infinitive?
Right, right, yep.
I, I'm not kidding. She really.
I know, Deacon.
Okay, so so let's talk about the, the Wheelock site visit.
I came away from the whole thing fairly encouraged by the, the degree of vegetation that was there versus the last time I was there. I mean, that was, that was quite a difference.
It really was.
It seems to be progressing in terms of percentage. I, I don't know if they're at 90% yet or not, but it seems like it's heading there. It's not a wildflower meadow. I don't think it's going to be a wildflower meadow.
There's no, there's no way in hell.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah, that was our idea. We imposed that and sometimes, you know, kind of wishful thinking and I, I, I question whether it's even possible in forest soils.
I was just gonna say, with unamended forest soils, what we got is what we're gonna get.
Yeah, I think the bigger issue for me was the erosion, you know, and sort of the stormwater management. I mean, it was disheartening. I mean, the road is washed out, you know, and I can't, I can't remember which guy, there's, of the three of them, I think I talked to two of them, you know, the guy who's taking over operations, you know, said he was concerned about it, which was good to hear, but, you know, not that I'm an expert in this, but, you know, there was a lot of running on the road, you know, and then that basin on the bottom, from what I found out later, it's supposed to be empty and that was sort of full of vegetation and water, so you know, from, from, and then somewhere farther back, you know, at the top of the arrays, there was lots of standing water, which they also talked about. So I, you know, it just seems like the water issues, which, you know, are both affecting, could have both affect the site, the road access. I remember, you know, during the hearings, there was a whole discussion about having the driveway be wide enough for safety vehicles, but if it's rutted out and sort of continues to disintegrate, it's not gonna be accessible very much longer. And then I, you know, I don't know the water mechanics of, but I'm, I'm assuming that some of this water is also getting down to Pratt Corners since I hear neighbors talk about that. So I agree about the wildflower meadow. I think that, that ain't never gonna happen, but I think the, the water stuff needs to get addressed. I was, I was concerned about that. I'm hearing the problem with the wildflower meadow. Is it unreasonable to request that a couple loads of amended soil be brought in? It's.
It's a lot more than a couple loads.
Yeah, and it really wasn't part of our condition. The wildflower meadow part was, but the amending the soil was not.
Well, technically, I mean, it, I mean, the question is, if there's things that are not up to snuff with what the special permit is, how, what do we want to ask them to remedy or not? I'm guessing putting soil on that grass is maybe something we might not want to ask them to do, but it's, I think it was within our ability to say that we asked for and they agreed to a wildflower meadow. So, you know, my, my sense is, which of the issues do we want to press them on?
Yeah, the, the point about the soils was it wasn't gonna be amended. It was, because those forest soils are gonna be left largely intact because that's what prevents erosion. And so we got the one thing fairly well. We did prevent most erosion and sedimentation. And so we got the one thing fairly well. We did prevent most erosion and sedimentation, but we still have those same soils and they're. They're trying to grow a forest back. I mean, a lot of those are just oak and maple saplings that are trying to grow up in there. There's a, this is a pretty good variety, but you know, this, it would grow back in trees. It's probably no time if it was just left alone. So I, you know, to me, I I felt. The. The. Driveway, the access drive at its steepest point where it kind of goes from the first basin and winds its way up to the level of the panels. That's always been. Problematic. It's the steepest part. So I I was, and we do have a condition that says that everything should be kept in good working order and including the driveways, lists the driveways as. One of the things that needs to be kept in good working order. It doesn't surprise me that that it eroded because it's steep, it's gravel. And we've had a heck of a lot of rain. I mean, Carver Road practically washed across Wendell Road when we had one of these storms. Baker Road was a was a canyon, a disaster. So it doesn't surprise me that this happened, but there may be some things that they can do to. Rectify that for the future. And one of them might be to. Use a different surfacing material, in particular on that area. And our highway department has been using ground up. Road cuttings, kind of reprocessed asphalt and dirt. I know they used it on the shoulders of Baker Road and it's held very well. That might be a solution for that particular. Area there is to just have a better, more resilient surface. And then I think that ditches, in particular, the the upgrading ditch. Needs to be redone, probably with some heavy angular rock. Because that's. That's just a source of eroding material right now. It needs to be, it needs to be hardened, I think.
Jeff, when you're saying ditch, you're talking about the ditch on the side of the road or a tension pond?
No, the 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 upgrading ditch that that runs along that road. That catches water from from the panels.
Before it hits the road.
Before it hits the road. It's also supposed to, the road's supposed to be crowned and it's supposed to. Run off into the ditch as well, but but those ditches just seemed like. They were eroded out and were more sources of. Of sediment than and really a way to conduct water. So probably large angular stone. Should go in there to harden those ditches, I would think. So. To me, that was the, that was the most significant area. I I did walk with a conservation commission member. Down past the outlet to that first basin to see what had had gone into the woods. And it doesn't appear that any sediment has washed into the woods. It did once a long time ago. When the thing was being built, but it doesn't appear that any fresh sediment has washed down there. And it doesn't appear that the. Kind of iron deposits that are coming out of the soil have gotten out of that pond either. So that's good. But I'm just. This Concom jurisdiction is triggered when. Sediment happens to get into the buffer zone. So that's sort of what we were looking for down there, but we didn't find it.
But technically speaking, that's supposed to be empty, not full of water and vegetation, right?
It was designed to be a retention basin and a retention basin. It is supposed to fill up and then drain out through the through the soil, filtrate. And we asked them to provide soil testing, that that would, that that would work and they did, but it hasn't worked. It's never worked that way. It's always worked more like a detention basin. But without a proper outlet structure. So it just kind of fills up and then it goes out over the weir. Normally, a detention basin would have. Would have a method to to drain it out like a pipe that's at at the bottom that would let the water out at a prescribed rate. So this is sort of a detention basin without a proper outlet structure, the way it's functioning.
Looks like Miriam wants to chime in.
Yeah, indeed, Miriam.
You're muted.
Still muted. I'm still muted, thanks. Well, I had a question and I just wanted, since. I had sent emails to the planning board, but for the public record and for other people who are present, I just wanted to reiterate that there were kind of two asks coming from. Well, three asks coming from the Concom after our our liberation about it. And one was. Curiosity about the Ferris staining. Whether it's due to Ferris soils or whether it could be due to debris, metal debris that's corroding or some other soil disturbance. There's. You know, this along that story, that drainage channel coming from the up gradient area down by the panels down to that detention pond there, there is a whole. Line of of iron staining and the source isn't clear, but it's getting into that pond and infiltrating into the groundwater perhaps. So that was one question and ask. Obviously, we don't have jurisdiction over anything at this point, but we're just asking the planning board to consider that. The other was. To review and maybe consider asking for some kind of systematic routine. Stormwater documentation about the, oh my God, sorry. Stormwater monitoring, at least for a period of time, maybe for a year. Since we don't really have a. A baseline for understanding how that basin is functioning and, you know, what's coming off of the road onto Pratt Corner Road during storm events. So. And here's my cap.
I have, I have just.
And I had a question, which was, my recollection from the hearings way back in the day was that they weren't a, where that basin is, the lower, the basin that's on the northern side, they weren't able to get equipment in to do the soil testing. During the hearing process, but they were going to do it during the construction phase. Did they actually report on that? I don't know if they ever, did they come back with the soil testing?
Yes.
They did.
Yep, and our engineer confirmed that that soil testing indicated that it could function as a retention plan.
And that was after the construction started, after the permit was issued?
Yeah, yeah, we had that, we had that, that they submitted it. And then our engineer reviewed it and said, yeah, this jives with a retention plan, but I I can tell you that it's never functioned that way. And the. The the iron leaching has has occurred since the beginning.
Actually, go ahead.
I just need to. So Miriam, I have, you know, number one, you said you had three items. One is.
Hold on.
The source of the Ferris material. Two is, you know, the requesting some sort of prescribed stormwater monitoring program to be reported to the the board and the Concom. And what was the third?
Yeah, well, store some sort of, you know, for a period of time, getting a baseline for how things are functioning after storm events and, you know, our recommendation as a. Was possibly after two inch precipitation within a 24 hour period, but. You know, we didn't have a lot of time to really think about that. We just kind of thought that was a. You know, not too low a bar because. That that would be a pretty significant precipitation event. And then to include some sort of monitoring or reporting on what's happening with the access road down toward. Pratt Corner Road, that junction.
Okay.
So I would, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So the third one was to just kind of like. Extend the the monitoring down to the access road.
Yeah.
Where it comes from Pratt Corner.
Right.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Sorry, no, I appreciate.
But I would agree with what Jeff is saying about this, that stormwater channel perhaps needing more armoring and.
I I don't think we have the ability to impose new reporting regimes, new monitoring requirements. And open this permit up and start adding conditions to it. We have, we have the ability to to do what's in the permit and that involves an annual report. Field visits, probably as often as we wish to go out there. And then holding their feet to the fire about the. The proposal that they made and the conditions that that are in the permit that we wish to, that we wish to pursue, but new stuff. I don't think we can do that. This is a closed permit.
So that's what I was going to ask Jeff. So, I mean. I was, I was encouraged talking to them, you know, but words are cheap and not codified. So. Part of what I was thinking was, since I think, you know, they said, you know, they'd come back to a meeting after we talked, that. It seems like there's some remediation that needs to happen, like the ditches, the the road. You know, I don't, whatever we agreed to, but just generally speaking, if there were some remediation that tied to the initial conditions. To say that the the current situation based on our site visit is not up to snuff the way it was, it's supposed to be. You know, and that if they can present to us a plan for how they're going to deal with it, you know, in a, in some reasonable time period, whether it's two months, six months, whatever. And they write it up and send it to us and then we can read it and have a meeting with them about it to review it. But it seems like. I would feel much more comfortable, especially given, you know. That they're new, they're essentially new to the site compared to, you know, given the the changing operators, to be able to have them say, this is our, we understand what the conditions initially were. This is our remediation plan to get it to the status that everyone expects it to be. We can all agree on that and then they can. Report out, you know, if it's a six month thing, they can report out at six months. If it's a year long thing, they're going to report twice in the year, but just give us a status on that. Be agreed upon activity. It seems like that's a reasonable thing and it would. Create some kind of accountability and paper trail for what we thought the issues were and what they said they would do. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, yeah, and. I mean, what we ask of them needs to swing off of of what's in that permit already.
Yeah.
And and if, you know, if if we want to do something about that first basin. Which is supposed to be a retention basin. You know, we could, we could think about requiring them to put an outlet in. An outlet that would drain it, which would make it more of a proper detention basin.
This is our window of opportunity. We wanted to do that.
Yeah, you know, on the other hand, the the thing seems to seems to be doing its job and it's job is is to keep. Eroded sediment on site and out of the wetland buffer zone and. So that it doesn't travel offsite onto other properties or into wetlands. It seems to be doing that.
So my question, if it's a site that we're talking about that has the cattails growing in it?
Yeah.
The the question is, it's a, it's a developing wetlands as far as I'm concerned. And what's the future of that? Is that going to continue to fill in on its own? Or do we ask them to adhere to to the condition and scrape it and put in a drainage pipe like Jeff's talking about? Or do we leave it alone and see what happens?
Yeah, I'm I'm inclined to to have them clear it and do, you know, abide by what the conditions are. For, I guess for two reasons. One, because that was the condition, so let's be clear about it. But I think two more importantly. You know, if we keep getting more rains or we get weird snows and ices and stuff, and then it stops working at some point in the future, we sort of. We've missed our window to ask them to comply because de facto, we're okay with it if we're not asking to do it now, you know, like why, why five years from now or not now? So I think if there are other things like the ditches and the road we want to deal with and and they're new to the site, you know, they're aiming to please. It sure seemed that way.
One thing you might consider doing. If we really want a retention basin, I remember in the beginning. Retention basins are 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 supposed to have a a soil at in the in their bottoms that will accept water, that will infiltrate it down into the water tables. Slowly but surely. In the beginning of this project, a lot of, a lot of sediment, a lot of fines, a lot of chocolate milk washed into that basin. And maybe what happened was the, you know, the pores and the little spaces got clogged up by all this. All these fines, all this eroded material, and it kind of ruined it as a retention basin. Maybe the. And what often happens in construction projects is. After the construction phase, once the site is stabilized and the water is is more clear that is going into the to the basin, it gets mucked out so that. All those fines and and clogged materials on the bottom get. Excavated out and then the thing receives mostly clear water and it can work as it was intended. So maybe that's what they need to do is just scrape that bottom.
So that that means removing all the vegetation that's in that basin right now. Is that correct?
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to get enough of the bottom scraped away. You know, which would be fine, almost clay type material. And then see if it would function as a retention basin, as the engineers indicated it would.
Miriam has her hand up.
Just as a, as a point to that, the original special permit application. Had an appendix with a stormwater operation and maintenance plan. That called for the detention basins to be cleared of vegetation quarterly, a quarterly basis.
Okay, well, there's our answer.
And the outlet, I think maybe the outlets cleared, but definitely the vegetation being cleared. So it, that was in the appendix to the stormwater plan they submitted.
Original people. So, so it sounds like, I mean. If we can. Articulate the list of things we just discussed and tell them that we want a remediation plan to address those different points, that we can then invite them to submit it. Present it after we reviewed it and then figure out what kind of accountability process makes sense. You know, to basically make sure that their plan is on track and then complete it at some point. Does that summarize it pretty well?
Yeah, I think we should articulate our concerns if we have them about the road, about the ditches and about. The basin not functioning as a retention basin and. Have them relay those concerns to their engineer. It would be probably better to talk to their engineer about it, you know, let that person come to a meeting. And see what they have to say.
Do you think, Jeff, again, I'm just trying to figure out process like. If, just say we invite them to the October meeting, we can verbally. You know, talk this back and forth and then they can go away and write something up that they can share with us that says in writing, this is what we're going to be doing and when. Or. Which is different from what I suggested. I'm fine with your suggestion, but your suggestion is something different, right?
Michael, would you repeat what you're suggesting, please?
I I was, I was originally thinking, well, we can write up, just like Jeff said, you know, our concerns about the retention basin, the ditch and and the ditches on fixing the road. Send that, you know, Jeff, you know, or I could send that to them and say, this is what we discussed in the September meeting. What we'd like to have is a written remediation plan on these three points that the planning board can review and then you can present to us about it. So that was sort of. My initial thought. I'm totally fine with, I think Jeff's suggesting is that. We use a meeting in October perhaps to talk to them about it. Then we can come up with an agreement about what we think is practical and appropriate. They can then go back and write up. That plan and submit it to us, but I guess my big thing is I want to have something in writing that says what we, what we're concerned about and how they're going to address it. So the timing is I'm less concerned about.
Yeah, okay, so Penny Jakes has her hand up, Deacon. Yeah. Okay. So Penny Jakes has her hand up, Deacon.
Oh, thank you.
I, I would be able to, hold on a sec. I, I would be able to write them an email. Summarizing the concerns that we agreed to, our concerns tonight. And inviting them to that meeting and suggesting that they discuss this with their engineer and have that person present at the meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to go.
Thank you, Jeff.
Does, does Penny still have her hand up?
She does. So Penny would just like to comment that um, I like what Jeff suggested. Um, I might recommend, because to me, it seems like there is some timeliness to get the road in shape before winter. And if you don't start discussing a plan until your October meeting, time is slipping away, you might do what Jeff suggested. And ask them to come to your October meeting with a plan that hopefully you can improve, approve.
That was my suggestion.
So, huh?
That was my suggestion.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so that.
Let's just say.
Then in October, you have a plan and maybe they can actually implement it before winter sets in. I will take my hand away now.
One thing I, one thing, I can't remember when we were visiting, which one of the, the fellows that was there said this, but they, apparently they planned to visit the site after every rainfall of, of sufficient dimensions. And I wonder if um, if they would be interested in voluntarily sharing um, what they find. I mean, I mean, if they, if after a storm, they, they find something that's amiss, I mean, maybe they can just tell us without, without being required by the, by the permit.
Well, well, they can, but I think we still have to hold them to their reports to report.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I mean, if these guys actually want to be cooperative with us, they might, they might want to just let us know how their monitoring is going as they, as they do, more, more as they do it. I mean.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea, Deacon. I mean, I got the impression, I mean, I was sort of, I found it funny because I came away from that meeting saying, oh, they seem cooperative. Deacon was much more cynical than me, which is, I wasn't expecting. Um, but it, I, it felt like they were trying to impress us with their conscientiousness, whether I, you know, we trust them and that's a different story. But we might as well ask and say, can you share this information with us? We, you know?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. That's.
I, I agree. I remember the guy who just started, who was just getting to know the site.
Joel, I just wrote it, yeah.
Okay, remember he said all these things that we were pointing out were all not problems, but opportunities, remember? For them to talk their game. So let's offer them lots of opportunities.
Yeah, agreed.
I, I think the, the, uh, uh, unless the ConCon has other concerns, I think the, the, the principal reason to to make them do work on the, on the basin is to increase the capacity of it. Because there's a lot of water in there, so there's not a lot of freeboard. It's only like this much when we went there until it's overflowing.
Right.
You have a big rain, it's going to go right to the outlet quickly rather than filling up slowly and maybe not getting out of there as fast. So is, is, is that, can we agree that that's kind of what we're after is a basin that is, can hold more? Deal with more water.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, from a quasi novice perspective, it seems like that's the objective, you know, which is why if you clean it out, it's doing what it's supposed to doing, then, you know, less vegetation, less gunk on the bottom, it has greater capacity. And I would send it, Jeff, I would send it to, to Tim. I have, I wrote down their name. So Tim Garcia is the overall guy in Florida.
Yep.
And then Joel Walker is the guy who's based in Lunenburg, who's taking it over and who is enthusiastic. So probably those two guys.
Joel Walker was the one who, who said that uh, they would, they would monitor after every significant storm. And I'm not sure what significant means in their terms, but.
Yeah. And he said he was, he was the one who told me that he was concerned about the erosion. So I don't think that's a big push to sort of just tell them that we are too.
Yeah, there's better surfacing materials that they can use on that. It's um, that's just sort of rough gravel. It's not really going to stay put. So shall I do this and um, and, and then provide a, a, a copy to the ConCon and the planning board, which can't be discussed. It can be, it can be read and, and everyone can know about it for the next meeting, but.
Yeah, I, if, if you send it off and just do it after the fact, we won't, we don't deliberate. And I, I'd support them. You know, if, if they can, in your request, Jeff, if you can have them write something up. Like Penny said, you know, a plan that we can review prior to the October meeting. So when they come, we can actually be discussing that. That would be, that would be preferable.
Yeah.
So I, I think Penny's point is, is particularly appropriate, given that we've had to, given that we've lost a week to the holiday. And in the oncoming winter.
Okay. I'll do that.
Okay, I sense a consensus. I don't, I don't think we need to vote.
Do, do we want to, do we?
We need to make a motion?
Right, but before, before we do that, do we want to reconsider the date of our October meeting? Uh, because we moved it down the calendar. Do we want to move it up the calendar so we can deal with this sooner?
October 4th?
Yeah.
I could do that.
I could.
I could.
I could. I could.
Okay.
Lyndon nodded her head.
I could.
All right, changing date.
Okay. Nathan, you got that?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Good catch. So for motion, I'll move the Jeff right to the energy contacts and let them know that.
Next era.
Next era, what, oh yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, sorry about that. They all start blending together. And convey our three concerns about retention basin. The ditch and the erosion on the road. Ask them to submit a report that we can review and invite them to an October 4th meeting. And that Jeff will be the designated person for the planning board, getting back to our non-subcommittee issue.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Are you, are you okay with, are you, did you get all that, Nathan?
No. But, yeah, so.
I'll write it to you.
Well, so, you know, what I have is that, you know, you, you move that the board will deliver the uh, concerns we have to uh, next era and request that they uh, you know, co- um, attend the um, uh, October 4th meeting with a uh, a plan for uh, addressing those concerns.
Well, there's two changes I would make, what I said, which is I think worth capturing, Nathan, is I would articulate what the three concerns are for the minutes.
Yeah, what are those three concerns?
So there's the retention basin. There's the ditch along the road. Jeff has a better name for it. And then the erosion on the driveway itself. Those are the three points. And then the other, did you get those?
And I want to note that the uh, erosion of the driveway uh, itself uh, being, uh, being requested to uh, um, be repaired prior to winter.
Sure, yeah. And then the other part would be that they submit a report for our review prior to their attending the meeting in October. Because if we get it the day, like if they send it to us and show up the same day, we're not going to have any time to read it and think about it.
All right, let me, give me one uh, second here to uh, put this down. Okay, so I have uh, right, you know, um, moved that the board deliver concerns to next era via Lacy and request that they report back to the board prior to the 10th forum meeting and attend the meeting to discuss. Uh, the concerns are capacity of the retention basin, the ditch along the uh, road needing to be hardened and the erosion of the driveway itself needing to be repaired with that uh, uh, being requested to be repaired uh, prior to winter.
Close enough, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I, I might kind of, you know, clean it up a little bit in terms of like the flow of the language, but that's uh, I've got, I've got the, okay, and you know, Bressler seconds, uh, okay. This is where Deacon asks us if there's any further discussion. Uh, yes. Any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Michael?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Linda?
I'm sorry, I.
I lip read a nine.
Nathan?
Stain.
Okay, Robert?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
I'm an I. Good, good. Well, let's move on to the special permit fee schedule note.
Okay, so that I think is me. I sent everyone an email with the language, but um, to review somewhere in the s- late spring, early summer, we had this conversation about if there's a special permit, but there's um, two applications that are combined with the same project, well, how we do the pricing. And so we came up with this um, pricing scheme. And this note codifies that. And so what we talked about was adding it below the fee schedule, so it's on the document. And at the time, what we talked about is I was going to write it up um, as the delegated party, so I wasn't a subcommittee. And then the less than quorum people reviewing it would be Deacon as chair and Steve volunteered to look at it and they both did. And we came up with this final version of the language um, based on that. And then there's another note, which I honestly can't remember if that was part of my homework and, or when it showed up about the non-permitted work. Um, that's a second note in there as well. Which basically says, any work beginning before permit has been issued is subject to double fees and a stop work order removal fee. That might have been pre-existing, I'm not sure. Um, but we never voted to approve this language in the notes. And when we do, I can update the fee schedule.
I think that's, that's what we agreed on, you know, the um, the highest permit, half the, half the fee for the other, the other permits. Yeah, I thought it was good.
I thought the language was fine.
I move, I move that we accept that language and allow Michael to do with it as needs to be done.
Okay. Do I, do I hear a second?
Second.
That was Robert or Linda? I'm not sure who, who won.
I'm the fourth Linda.
Okay, okay.
Like hands down.
Any more discussion? I'll, I'll call the roll. Uh, Michael?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Uh, Nathan?
Hi.
Uh, Robert?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Uh, I'm an I. Good, good.
So, so, so Deacon? Look, look, can I just interject? I see Mary Lou is back. And I, I read an email from her that was, that she sent out um, shortly after the meeting began, requesting that the chat function be activated, because that's what she needed to use to communicate. So I think that was the, that was what she was requesting.
I'm, I'm just looking to see if we can do that. Becky set this up, so there might be.
Disabled by the town.
Oh, by the whole town. Okay.
I know we had one meeting where, where Linda Scott was really objecting to the chat. I, 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 which frankly, I don't even know what it is, so.
It's a way of having side conversations, typing while the meetings, if you want to.
Yeah, it's, it's not clear if the chat would easily become part of the public record.
That's what it was, right.
And also, when there's chat, I believe that you get these pop-ups that come on, like somebody, you know, like Nathan Murphy says blah, 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 to every, you know, and they'll kind of come up on your screen and you can't really disable it. So it's, it's not best assigned feature, particularly for our purpose.
Yeah, and I think to your point, Nathan, like if, like Lesu is calling in by phone and if you're, if you're just calling him by phone, you can't see the chat, so it's not really publicly available information.
Right, yeah, that's, that's true.
Okay, so hopefully Mary Lou is listening and hearing why the chat doesn't work. I do see her on the screen there, but apparently she can't communicate for some reason other than by the chat.
Sorry about that.
Okay, um, let's, uh, let's move on to uh, community preservation rep.
I think this might be short. This is me too. So I'm currently the, the community preservation committee rep. Um, I think I've been doing it for two years. Um, Nathan and I, this spring slash summer had conversations about him maybe doing it, but now that he's a daddy the second time, I think um, he's understandably begging off for a year. So I think if everyone is okay with it, which I'd be shocked if I had competition, um, I'll continue doing it for this year.
I would like to move that the uh, board appoints or recommends, is it, is it a point, recommend, designate? What do we, what, where do we need here?
Um, I think it's recommend.
Uh, I move that the board recommends uh, Michael to uh, to serve on the um, Community Preservation Act Committee.
Second.
Am I correct? No one else wants to do it?
Okay, I'll call that further, I'll call that further discussion, Michael. All right, I'll, I'll call the roll. Um, and we'll do it backwards this time. Robert?
Yes.
Nathan?
Hi.
Linda?
I.
Okay, Jeff?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
I'm an I. Good.
Okay, I don't count, right? Is that what I'm getting?
Top liver, top liver.
Your, your picture isn't on the screen, Steve. What would you like to, would you like to vote?
Yes, I would. I.
Okay, great. I think we're unanimous.
We are.
So begin before we wrap, can I just throw out an idea for a future meeting, maybe October?
Certainly.
I was thinking about this independently, but then there was that email from Becky today, but. It seems like maybe next meeting, we could start our annual conversation about any Bible law amendments that we want to consider or. Need to address without getting into the substance. It seems like maybe just put that on the agenda for next month's discussion.
Certainly.
What email was that from Becky?
It was, it was about. Building in that she talked to Donna and Donna had concerns about that we prohibit building solar installations of biomap two and. All the biomap two is in the FC district and somehow that could be interpretive as being prohibitive. I didn't, I didn't. I was, I was thinking if we talked about it, that. You could clarify a little. I understand what she's talking about, but I don't know if. Like with the, if it's really prohibitive or not, but she, she Becky basically said. If we, if it's interpreted that way, we might consider it. I don't know if we want to consider it. I actually was just generally like I had a much more mundane bylaw thing to think about. I was thinking about. Small houses as something just to put out there, but you know, it seems like every fall we talk about. Possible bylaw tweaks and then it takes us a few months to build up steam. So.
Yeah, well, anyway, it on the. Two stuff. We, we have talked about it at meeting. Jeff's understanding has been that. That that's a restriction that can be waived. I, I answered Becky's email to that effect. Donna, Donna answered Becky saying that she had gotten that from Jeff too. So.
Oh, great. Good point.
And, and I apologized in an email to Becky. That I hadn't reported to her about, about our meeting discussion. Cause I mean, I sort of assumed that, that it was simply wavable and that it wasn't really a problem. For overturning the zoning. Jeff.
I, I can't remember what came first, next or last, but. Whether you guys gave me the assignment to talk to Donna. And Bob Ritchie, because I talked to both of them.
Yeah.
About this and. And after my conversation with Donna, I believe she was satisfied that, you know. That. You know, the, the biomap is, is, is a large area. They're, they're crudely drawn polygon. And most of it's because we're close to the Quavon. Doesn't really have much to do with anything, but other than just being proximal to Quavon. And also the Amherst water supply watersheds. But within those polygons, there's sensitive areas and there's not sensitive areas. And if what is being proposed is not in the sensitive area, we, we can, we can very easily waive it with justification. So probably, probably the bylaw wouldn't be challenged on its face. Wouldn't be challenged without an application. We'd have to go and. Take an unreasonable stand on biomap. You know, like take the position that every single thing in biomap, no matter where it is or what it's like, you can't build a solar thing in there. You know, then they could go and challenge that, but without actually getting a decision from the planning board, it's unlikely that, that that's going to be challenged. On its face and both, both the attorneys agreed.
Well, thank you for doing, looking at that. Yeah, just to be clear, I have no desire to like have a solar amendment discussion this coming year. Like, I, I don't want to go there. There's no need to. I, like I said, I was just thinking about if we had any mundane things we wanted, but. I appreciate knowing that, Jeff. That's really helpful.
Um, Michael, I, uh, could you just give a little more information on your thought on small houses?
Um, well, you know, I, I guess, I don't feel very strongly about it, but it seems like. There's increasingly growing, you know, movement in terms of. That is the strategy to create affordable housing without a lot of the big infrastructure. And, you know, especially in towns like Shootsbury, uh, you know, in a lot of rural counties, it's hard to get. Create housing without doing the whole building lot thing. And so, you know. Being, so when I was working at the community foundation, we gave. Habitat for Humanity grant to look into doing small houses and they ended up working with North Hampton and discovered that they had to deal with bylaw changes. Because towns, you know, no one thought about this when we were, people were developing zoning. So. Um, it's for me, it's mostly just a discussion. I don't really have an end game. But to think, you know, if that's a feasible possibility, doesn't have a negative impact on town, we can create some housing. With a lower, you know, environmental footprint and things like that, it might be worth looking at. That's, you know, there's that, so is that helpful, Robert?
It is, and I would be interested in that discussion.
Yeah, you know, I just reminded myself, the other thing I emailed Deacon, which may be for another agenda item is. Talking about. The MVP, the. Municipal vulnerability prepared.
Yeah, before you get into MVP, I just want to. Confirm with Jeff regarding his conversations about the.
Oh, sure. Sorry.
Bylaw being right. Uh, you said both attorneys. I assume that was a town council and Bob Ritchie.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just double checking for, for that. So, okay, um, Michael proceed. Thank you.
You have the power, Nathan. Yeah, all, all I had been thinking was. I sent everybody an email that was an announcement, I guess about two weeks ago, the state gave out the MVP grants for 2021. And it was something on the order of like 200 plus towns in the state got money, you know, which is a huge number and. I know Nathan and I talked about, should we apply? We just didn't know. We have the report, but we didn't have, as a town didn't have prioritization. We didn't have clarity. You know, so I emailed the planning board and the select board. Just see about starting that conversation. So when they announced the grants, which I'm guessing could be somewhere between December and February. That we actually had a, some prioritization, you know, it could be. A planning board related concern. It could be a concom thing. It could be a water resources thing, you know, there's a range of things you could write for. So it's mostly to figure out what's most important for the town. So when they announce it. We're ready for it since it seems like they're actually opening more up more money. You know, and with infrastructure money coming down the pike, who knows, that could be even more generous.
Thank you for bringing that back to us, Michael. And, uh, you know, I. Yeah, I don't remember what the date was, but it, you know, it was one of the rains. We had four inches at night. And I thought, oh yeah, it's time to revisit this MVP stuff, right? With, uh, all the damage that occurred to all our dirt roads and whatnot. So. You know, without having, you know, thoroughly looked at everything, it seems like a good place to, you know, look for grants would be. You know, things like culvert repair and, you know, just, you know, hardening of roads and drainage. Systems and whatnot seems to be a good. Place to, you know, get any grants that we can there. But, you know, I don't know who else has, you know, looked at this stuff and, you know, what else? Comes to mind in terms of what our priorities should be? Does anyone have any ideas on that?
Yeah.
Besides, you know, the obvious, you know, like, you know, whatever we can do to help prevent their roads from being washed away during major storm events.
Pave them.
Pave them. Okay, that's, that's, uh. So that might be, that might be something that can be, you know, looked at.
Nathan, you're new to town. It's, it's one of, it's one of those tension points.
Not without great, not without great, let's call it discussion.
I, I will say, I live on the only part of Baker Road that's paved. I own all the frontage on, on that segment and it, it was recently done over by the town. Including ditches that were really well constructed and. And shoulders and in, in the monsoons that we had after a couple of them. Baker Road looked like a, an experiment in geomorphology. I mean, there were canyons, there were deltas, there was, you know, it was like six feet to drive on it. It was insane. And I'll tell you, the paved portion and all the ditches and all the shoulders worked exactly as they were supposed to work, not, not a thing came off of there.
But, but what about the, this, the, the dirt road beyond the pave section?
Oh, disaster.
Yeah, okay.
That was a disaster.
Yeah, so all the runoff from the, from the roof, that apron of, or that section of the road being paved caused a problem downhill.
No.
I, I don't know if that's an accurate characterization, Steve.
Actually, Steve.
Obviously Steve needs a topography lesson.
Right, Steve, actually she went out in like three in the morning. Jeff was out there with a pitchfork sort of.
Well, I, I did, did note Jeff that you didn't put your slow down signs. Until that paved portion was in and that's my big concern that in addition to deaf dog, their kids and bicyclists. I kind of like the dirt, bumpy dirt road.
Yeah, well, no, I, I put my signs in, but I discovered my dog couldn't hear anything. So.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm worse than your dog, I think.
Wait a second, Bob, did that sign say deaf dog or deaf man?
Uh, well, I'd have to put the ladder up in front of my house.
I would note that I joined the planning board because the town was trying to pave my road.
Okay, so we can.
All right.
Assume that you're a big proponent of paved roads then?
That's right.
Anyway, I didn't want to get into the substance of it, but clearly I think there's, there's room for thinking about MVP. Just if the planning board has a preference to throw into the hat.
Yeah, all right. So look, besides, you know, fixing ditches or hardening ditches or paving roads or not paving roads, are there any other thoughts on it?
Well, my only other thought, you know, and this is all assuming that maybe. You know, if we, if we didn't get five solar proposals, we'd have some time is. Look, you know, one of the recommendations of the plan is to look at the master plan and I don't. I don't think we have the ability to revisit the whole master plan, but I would look at the master plan through the lens of climate change. Cause when the master plan was developed. Although climate change was a, a real thing, it wasn't built in. But it would be an interesting exercise to see if there's any either verbiage or tweaks that we might want to include. Since clearly, you know, it's just getting progressively worse. And we could, you know, we could, we could do that, but you pay consultants if we actually went for grant money for that.
So Deacon, are we talking about? Zoning changes because that, um, the, the ZBA item is a possible zoning change.
Please bring it up.
Well, I mean, this is on the agenda, so it's. Um, I'm, I'm the liaison, I guess, between the ZBA and the planning board. And the ZBA has asked me to relay to the planning board interest. From the ZBA. Not from all members, but. Cause the ZBA is divided on this. On whether to. Revisit the zoning for Lake Wyola, in, in particular, the, the height of houses in the Lake Wyola district. Zoning board had a, a very contentious and. Contentious case last winter. Involving neighbors, pro and con applicants, lawyers, a divided zoning board. On whether to permit a house to go up. On, I think it's Lake Drive, but. Anyway, so there's, uh, the, the chair would like, Chuck Damari would like to. Get with the planning board in a joint meeting with the ZBA and maybe discuss. His ideas. I believe he is the proponent of making changes to the. The zoning bylaw. And what I think those changes would be, would be to increase the height of, of houses that are. Farther back from the. Front row around the, the lake itself. So I think he would, he would like to present that to the planning board. There are other opinions on the zoning board, which would also be presented.
Jeff, can I ask you one substantive question?
Sure.
Um, is the height? About visibility or is the height implied bigger residences, which then have a bigger impact on the lake?
It's, well, the height there is 28 feet, whereas it's 35 in the rest of town. So it's uniformly 28 feet all around the lake. So it, it, it would be, it would be the impact, the impact of increasing the height of houses that are on. Undersized lots without frontage and often not needing setbacks and that are very close together.
Yeah.
You know, this, we do these all the time at, 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 at the zoning board. And, and when they occur right at the, the shore of the lake. It, it, it often forms kind of a wall almost around the, the shore, which feels off the people behind, you know.
Right.
Road and the people behind. So it's almost this cascading effect of, of people losing their view of the lake that they'd had. And then, then they start thinking about going up and there was, then they block the ones behind them.
Right. Right, so it's, so it's more visibility, because I mean, for that short time is I, I was on the ZBA way back when actually. We did one at the lake. And I got the impression that people were trends, they were changing what were small bungalows into all year round. Buildings and therefore, you know, if you take like a, a one bedroom little thing and you make it a three bedroom, all of a sudden you're, you know, you got more wear and tear on the lake. So is that also part of it or? Is it really just the visibility?
Well, you, ah, it, it's a mixed bag. You know, a, a lot of these places are, you know, people have owned them for a long time and they're retiring there.
Yeah.
And, and then living there instead of summers year round. And the houses are bigger, the septic systems are often primitive and then they get replaced by. New Title V compliance systems, which can be a tight tank, which is actually a good thing. That doesn't work for year round houses because it's too expensive to pump it. So often you get new septic systems. Which. Involve the removal of many trees. So you're kind of defoliating the lake in the process. Defoliating the shore and then you've got septic inputs year round instead of just in the summer. So, yeah, you, you can, you can say that it has greater impact on the lake. But mostly what the zoning board. Considers when, when a place goes up and they don't meet all the, the, the setback requirements and, and they, and they propose to go up. We consider something called, will it be substantially more, will the nonconformity be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? So that's what we're given. We're given that in the state statute and it's also in our zoning bylaws. We have to interpret that. What does that mean? More detrimental to the neighborhood and the neighbors come in and they talk about. How it's going to be detrimental or not. And then we have to make some kind of decision on that. And it's difficult.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So, so anyway, without really getting, getting into it, because. Cause I'm on one side of this and the chair is on the other side of it. Um, I'm, I'm not going to present all my. On, on my side without the chair being here, he should probably come and, and. You should hear from him too.
Well, well, let's. We should, we, we should figure out a, a date that's, that's comfortable for. For the zoning board and the planning board. How long a discussion do you think this will be?
Um, could go. Could be a long discussion and I expect people from the lake will attend. I believe some people from the lake were, were on here earlier because it was on the agenda, but they've dropped off.
Was it on the agenda? I didn't see it on the agenda.
Was it on the agenda? I didn't see it on the agenda.
No, it wasn't on the agenda because, um, when you called me, it was too late and we, and we agreed that it was going to be, um, you know, unanticipated business.
Yeah. Oh, it, it was, it was discussed and announced at the zoning board meeting last, that it would be on our, um, agenda tonight. So I think that's why they were, that's why they were here.
I see. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Um, well, well, for the meeting on, um, for the meeting on, on October 4th, uh, would we have time to do this? I mean, that would, I mean, with, with the wheelock stuff too and whatever else comes up? Or should we set up a, a meeting devoted to it?
Oh, I, I, I think you should try to stick it on there if, if only just introduce the, the planning board to the topic.
Yeah, even if it has to spill over into another meeting, at least we, we broach the topic.
Seems reasonable.
And, and, and members can think about it a little bit and then we can talk about it again.
Uh, I'm good with that. Um, that's, that's fine. Um,
Jeff, do you know if, you know, members of the ZBA have a sense of, you know, what a lot of the residents in the, uh, Lake Wyola district, you know, think about, uh, this issue?
I don't know. It's hard to say. Depends on where you're situated, um, what your future plans are. Um, yeah.
Depends on who you talk to, right?
It does. It, it does. I mean, we, we had three or four, um, neighbors come out in opposition to this last, um, increase in height. And I think in all the ZBA cases I've done down there, there's been at least one neighbor that's testified against for one reason or another.
I know that, I know that years ago, the, um, at Bruce Hartley's request, the planning board had a discussion of this issue. And the only, the only people who showed up to the meeting and were willing to speak were the people on the shoreline who wanted no changes.
No changes to what?
To the, to the rules regarding building up. Just, I mean, it's just a, it's just, I'm just pointing out that, that we did do that. We did have a, um, a not extensive discussion about this years ago.
Yeah. Well.
Deacon, can you clarify what, so you said it was raised and were the proposed changes to increase or decrease the, uh?
Well, there, it was, there was no real clear proposal at the time. There was a discussion about, about whether or not houses were being built too high. And, and in the event, the only people who really spoke at the meeting were the, were the people exactly at the shore who, who, who wanted no rules.
So this was after the 2008 zoning went into effect.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it was very, there was no real outcome to the discussion except nothing happened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so Hartley was of the opinion that, um, that they shouldn't.
Neighbor was blocking his view.
Right. Cause he's a couple tiers back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I, I would suggest that, that when, when Chuck presents what he's interested in and, 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 and then you, you, you hear from me, you'll know what the controversy is.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, I did hear a little bit about this controversy when we were doing the interviews for the land use clerk.
Ah, okay. And, and I'm, I'm not sure exactly how the third member of the zoning board feels about it, um, Herb Gilmore. We only have three members. We have no alternates now. Um, and the problem is, and, and another, another thing that may come up is, is taking the ZBA from three to five members. Because on these, all these special permits, when we do have this discretion, um, we can't approve anything without all three members voting together.
What's, what's the, what's the majority rule?
On, on a special permit, you need three out of three with a three member board.
Really? So what, what's the, so what's the percentage of the vote that would be relieved by going to five?
Oh, it, it would be four out of five. The super majority, it, it, it's special permits always a super majority. So it's, um, three out of three, four out of five, five out of seven.
So that's different from the two thirds we have.
Well, right. Cause the number of members is, is different. So we have seven members, so our super majority is five.
Right. But I mean, but if the rule were two thirds, two out of three would be enough, right?
It's, it's, it's the, the, well, no, it's prescribed in statute. It, 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 it says on a three member board,
Okay, okay.
It has to be three out of three. On a five member board, it has to be four out of five. On a seven member board, it has to be five out of seven. It's written right in the statute.
Okay, gotcha.
So the ZBA could propose that for town meeting, right? It'd be a part of the zoning bylaws, but it would be the ZBA requesting it?
Uh, yeah, but, but, you know, they, they, they want to, they want to collaborate with the planning board as possible.
Okay. Well, so, well, that's fine. Well, so, so I'll invite Chuck. I mean.
Yeah. And yeah, we could post both boards because, um, our third member would want to attend as well.
Yeah. So, um, I was hoping we could finish early. Is there, is there any more unanticipated business that people want to talk about?
Oh, you call eight 30 early?
Earlier than it's been, Steve.
Okay. It is earlier than it's been. I was, oh, far, you know.
You guys have to be on school committee for just one meeting. This is like so short. I love these meetings. I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you. Second, second, second from Jeff. Um, any discussion? Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Hi.
Linda?
Aye.
Nathan?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Steve, I'm, I'm not forgetting you.
Well, so nice of you to ask. I.
And I'm an I.
All right. I'll, um, I'll send you guys a copy of that email as soon as I get that done.
Great. And Deacon, remember to send me the town announce.
Will do.
Great. Thank you.
All right.
Bye bye.
Bye.